Hello, everybody, and welcome to the school committee meeting of December 20. I just said this, we were having difficulty with our audio, which is why the meetings ended for a moment and came back. It appears now that we have audio working through NCM, which is wonderful. We are, we have to pivot to remote due to a large number of illnesses on the committee and on people who regularly attend committee members, committee meetings, sorry. So tonight Kate Sibbing Dunn and Anne Marie Mazzola are not on the call due to illness. Teresa Stewart and David Hiltz are both here. Do I see David? I don't, I'm sorry, I didn't check before, is he here? Okay, are on the call as well as myself, who be chair, who will be chairing the meeting. Due to the number of illnesses that have been impacting the committee and the administration, we're going to quickly go through the proposed agenda for this evening and strike some things that are, may not be able to be possible to cover due to illness. So Dave, are all of our appearances here? Did anyone?
Yes.
That's all, okay, great.
Yep.
Budget, I'm sorry, your, your update will be there. Anything for the budget that we is not 100% ready to go?
It's already done.
Already, okay. Chair Mazzola is not here, we will touch base quickly for the long-term gen, agenda review, just to finish the January 10. Mr. Hiltz, are you prepared to do the superintendent search update without Ms. Sibbing Dunn?
Yes.
Okay, middle school building committee?
Yes.
Okay, the youth substance task force will be struck because that meeting did not occur. The strategic plan, is that 100% ready to go? Dr. Thompson and Dr. Taylor?
Yes, it is.
The elementary study update was not linked in our packets, does the committee feel ready to discuss that?
Yes, because it will be a verbal update and we can, I think there were some emails about some of the stuff late.
Teresa, are you okay with that?
As long as there's something to discuss, yes.
Okay, does anyone have a objection if we strike policy and table it for next week, given that Kate and Anne Marie are not here?
No objection, I would just ask Dr. Thompson and the policy subcommittee to see my email with my questions and feedback.
David, you okay with that?
Yes.
Superintendent evaluation process?
We should at least talk through some timeline stuff tonight, Joan.
Okay.
Yes.
Student services review, Dr. Taylor, there was nothing in our packet, is that 100% ready to go?
The initial meeting was very brief and we didn't even get through all the agenda items, so that can be pushed to January.
Alright, let's push that to January. Wellness curriculum, JJ?
Yes, I'll give a brief update on that.
Okay, and staff, transportation staff request, we need to vote on that, so that will also come through. Okay, alright, thank you, everybody, for, let's just do that quickly so that we're not reviewing things that we can't really review, because I know this, the week, past two weeks has been really tough. Due to illnesses impacting a bunch of committee meetings and a bunch of work that the central office has had to do. Okay, so our first agenda item is approval of minutes. We have the minutes from December 6th in our packet. I was not at the December 6th meeting due to illness, so I cannot motion nor can I vote.
I'll make a motion to approve both the business meeting minutes and then also the executive session minutes from December 6.
I will second that.
Is there any discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and I abstain, so that's 2-0-1. Okay, are we okay with tabling the warrants until Anne Marie comes back as she is the signatory?
Yes.
Alright, public comment, so to remind the committee, to remind the public, the public can access the meeting in person at the Savage Center or live via NCM on cable and online as it is live streamed. Just for point of information, there is a note that has been posted to the door at the Savage Center in case anybody came to do public comment, directing them to this location. Public participation for public comment period can only, can be accessed in person at the meeting. Signing up in advance through the superintendent's office by noon the day of the meeting to pre-register or to sign in at the meeting and/or to call the superintendent's office at 781-762-6804 by noon on the day of the meeting to register and to receive a meeting link that will be accessible for public comment only. Dr. Thompson, did we have anybody who registered for public comment?
We did not, Madam Vice Chair.
To the best of your knowledge, did anybody contact you in the past 12 minutes as a result of the sign on the Savage Center door?
No, they did not.
Okay, so having said that, I will declare public comment closed at 7:13. Appearances, Mr., and I apologize if I get names wrong, Mr. Buehler?
Yes, hello, I'm sorry for the poor quality, I'm actually sitting outside of the Savage Center with about 3%, 3% left on my phone. I'm here to seek approval for the French trip, the French exchange. We have two options now, there is the option of going in the week before February break and the week after April break. I had also submitted a poll that I took from parents, and I don't know if you received the results of that, but it looks like only 10% were opting for the February time and the majority, about 60%, were going for the April slots with the rest being sort of undecided.
Oh, Joan, you muted.
Yeah, are there any questions from the committee?
Well, thank you, Mr. Buehler, for coming back and doing this additional work. Joan, at the last meeting, we, we asked them to look at alternative dates because the, their initial proposal of end of April and into May was during the fourth term and right before AP week, which traditionally we don't approve trips during that time. But, Mr. Buehler, when you surveyed, I see that 41 people responded to the survey. Is it safe to assume that all 41 of these students are going on the trip? Or do you usually see like your initial response number go down?
So it was a pretty, a pretty slim response, I must say. I'm a little disappointed by that myself. I had hoped for a larger, you know, response and a bigger, a better data pool. I would assume that out of these 40, I would say probably 20 would be really interested in going on the trip.
Thank you, yeah, I was just wondering, like, people who responded, are they really gonna go on the trip? How does that swing the preference? I still have the same concerns I expressed at our last meeting about the April-May, so I'm more comfortable with the February date. But, Dr. Thompson, I didn't know, do you have a recommendation for how you want us to go about this tonight?
Well, I, I'm a little concerned with the February date, you know, and weather concerns on either, either part of the, of the, of the Atlantic. I think that could have a storm before they go or while they're there or what have you, that's usually why we do it in the spring. So I, I, you know, I do understand the, the concern, but weather-wise, the April date would probably be a better date to go. Of course, who knows, we could get no snow again. But that's just, that's just a concern I have with that, with that date. I mean, in, in either case, because the vacations don't line up, we are gonna have children, maybe we are gonna have people, you know, doing schoolwork, you know, through their Chromebooks, so.
Uh, Joan, um, I mean, my, my concern is still those AP exams. I mean, it's mostly juniors and seniors who go on these trips, and that's also the student population that would be coming, you know, back and within a week taking AP scores and, you know, if we prep them all year for those AP classes and then due to jet lag, they don't test well. It, it just feels counterintuitive to what we're asking them to do all school year. So my, my concerns still remain, I don't know what Joan thinks or, or David about the February date.
Joan, do you have anything?
I don't, I.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. No, no, go ahead. I wasn't part of the original conversation last week, so, or two weeks ago, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think trips like this, there's never a great time, because we can always find issues. I understand the, you know, the concern with APs and, you know, the end of the year. But, but again, I would go back to, to Dr. Thompson and, you know, what he thinks is, is best and path of least resistance.
Yeah, uh, yeah, Dr. Galligan just messaged me that the, the February dates would overlap with post, any postseason play.
Now you're asking me philosophically what's more important, academics or athletics? This is a whole other conversation that I don't think we want to get into tonight. I mean, at the last meeting, Anne Marie and Kate had shared my concerns, obviously they are not here, so it's just up to the three of us who are here. But nothing has changed for me with my concerns of the, the April May dates.
Thank you, I just wanted to point out again that the, you know, the, again, from the parents that have responded, the majority seem to prefer the April dates and, you know, looking at the, the people that have responded, there's a fair amount of, you know, then junior and senior parents that have also selected or preferred the April date. If that alleviates, you know, any of your concerns.
So we are not a consensus body, we are a voting body, I'll just remind everybody of that. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the original April dates for 2024?
I will second for the point for the, I will second for discussion.
I have no further comments, so.
Is there any additional discussion? No, okay, so all in favor of David's motion?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, so that motion carries 2 to 1, thank you.
Joan, can I just go on the record, though, I'm not against the trip, I'm all for the trip?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the timing of the trip that you're objecting to.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, thank you, Mr. Buehler, you are all set, that is approved for the April dates.
I appreciate it, thank you very much, and Ms. Stewart, I do share your concern, and I will make sure that the students will get ample time to work while they are in school in France so that they can best prepare for the AP exams. Thank you so much.
New IEP process, the special education update and the special education transportation update. Can I just ask a clarifying question? Are you going to do all three of those together or are we gonna be breaking those out separately? I'm just not sure how the flow, how you want the flow to go.
I can go from one to the next, to the next, as fast as I possibly can to meet the 20 minutes.
Well, no, I mean, alright, so let's do, let's do the new IEP process and then, okay, and then, and I will just say for the committee, I did have an exchange with Dr. Thompson and Ms. Semino earlier today, asking that the presentation be focused mostly on policy and budget, so if, so that's, so, so Ms. Semino, Dr. Thompson and I all know that we are working hard to keep it out of the weeds and into the, the policy and budget overview pieces, so just so the committee knows that. If there is something missing that you have asked for, please ask for it, but know that that's fault does not rest on Dr. Thompson or Ms. Semino.
Okay, so I'm really gonna just talk big picture about the IEP improvement plan rather than going through the slides with you that I have shared with you. So in the fall of 2024, we're required to implement the new IEP form that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has created. It has been over 20 years since we have had a document that fully reflects the regulations and requirements of the IEP process. So we have been engaged in professional development with DESI as well as with our department and working with the CPAC in order to create a professional development for parents in the spring regarding the new document. This is an ongoing process, as you'll hear from me in a little bit, we have received a grant to help support the efforts and I do anticipate that at some point we will see a financial implication of the new document, given the complexities that have been added to the document. At this point in time, I cannot decipher for you what those, that impact will exactly be. So there will be more to come on the IEP project, I don't wanna, I, I shared with you all the slides that show the new document and form and everything. I shared with you DESI's sort of rationale for this and our training schedule and a whole lot of information. So if you have any questions regarding the IEP improvement project, please let me know and I will be happy to answer them for you.
May I ask if you, I know you said you can't tell us what the budget implications will be, do you anticipate that they will result in a budget positive or a budget, budget negative?
Oh, no, these will be, we will need to add because of the reflection of the new IEP. One of the big things that they focus on is assistive technology. Another thing that is a big focus in the new IEP is around post-secondary transition planning, both areas that I will in the near future share with you all, recommendations around.
Dr. Thompson, is there anything that tech is, is, is our collaboration with tech able to assist with assistive technology?
They do not have an assistive technology for consultation at tech.
No.
Right now, we go through a third-party vendor and it's, it's at a significant cost.
Yeah.
And when did you say that? This will be, when, when's the timeline for this, when will you be rolling this out?
We are all required to have it in motion in the fall of 24. I think it will take a good two years to get everybody rolled over to the new document.
Okay. David, I couldn't, you're muted, did you mean to, oh, you know you're muted, okay.
I was just saying, when, when it comes to that process, I would imagine, you know, I think two years is generous, I would say probably three.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hopeful, David, I'm hopeful.
Are there any other questions from the committee?
Uh, Joan, since we're not going through the, the presentation, I know Ms. Semino put a lot of work into it and some of it was designed to get information out to the community. So just a question for Dr. Thompson and Ms. Semino, how else can we get that information out to the community?
So we, are you okay with me going, Dr. Thompson? Okay, so we, we have a plan, a rollout plan, which I shared with you all, which includes communicating to the public, DESI has provided template letters to go out to the public when our district is ready to do that. As well as I, as I mentioned, I'm working with the CPAC to put together a series of trainings for parents to be able to attend that helps explain the changes in the IEP.
And I'm sorry, you said you're working with CPAC?
Yes.
I glitched there for a second, okay.
I just, I actually just met with them this morning and we said we would get together in January and set the calendar for those trainings. Okay.
Any other questions from the committee? Ms. Semino, is it okay with you if we post those slides on the webpage for people who want to see it, given that you would have been presenting it in the meeting?
Yes.
Is that okay? Okay.
Uh, yes, yep.
David, Dave, I'm sorry, Dave, can you make sure that those get on the webpage? And maybe we can reference that in a parent square communication so that parents who are interested in the details can go in and look.
Yeah, I'd like to put a heftier.
Yeah, I would.
This is kind of high level for you all, but if we're gonna message something out to the community, I'd like to have it be a little more in-depth and more parent-focused on what is current, what is gonna be new and changed.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I, I would suggest that it would be something good to put up after the break, that people might not take the time this time of year to look at the slides. As entertaining as Ms. Semino's slides may be, that, that, that would also give Dr. Munoz a chance to, you know, razzle-dazzle a little, little bit too, so.
Some overlay of commentary.
Exactly, exactly.
No, there, I, I'm surprised that you're calling them high-level, because I thought they were very, very detailed and very, very good slides, so.
Oh, no, I, I pulled back significantly from what we're doing with staff and I think parents are gonna need a little bit more of a like, this is where the information currently is, this is where you'll find it in the new document.
Right, and once it's on the webpage, when, when you have those meetings with parents, you could refer them to the slides sitting on the webpage, so that would be a nice introduction, so.
Okay, so to summarize, we have a new IEP process that's being driven by the DESI audit that we anticipate, no, that's being.
Being driven by DESI for everybody.
Okay, DESI, so this is, this is statewide driven by DESI, resulting in a new IEP process, which will be rolling out in fall 2024 and will likely have a hit on our budget due to increased emphasis on assistive technology.
And post, post-secondary transition.
And post-secondary transition, okay. So more to come, if that's a trailer and for you and you're very excited about it, please be looking for Ms. Semino's slides and communication via Parentsware or get involved with CPAC, who Ms. Semino is already working with around this and messaging on this. Is that a fair summary?
Perfect.
Excellent, alright, any other questions from the committee? Alright, special education update.
Okay, so as you may or may not be aware, we presented FinCom last week before some point, it's all a blur at this point, and I was able to share some like high-level data points with them, just this current status of special education. So, you know, one of the things that I wanted to report is that our current October 1 numbers for special education are 933 students. We are, we currently have 205 students in our specialized programs district-wide. We have 150 students who are duly identified, special education and EL. We have had 33 students enroll in the Norwood Public Schools as of July 1st with IEPs. Last year in totality, we had 47, so we are significantly ahead of the game this year than we were last year. And I think this continues to speak to our very transient population that we have seen in the last couple of years. We have had 18, 19 students move in over the last two and a half years, requiring out-of-district placements. This is a very unpredictable situation for us that has had a significant impact overall on our budgeting. Currently, we have 73 students out of district, we have six in the process right now. Some of those are extended evaluations, so they are not permanent placements. They allow us to get a little bit more significant clinical view of students and what their educational needs are moving forward. And we have three Chapter 222 placements, which I have previously shared with you all, falls under the disciplinary laws. So these are students who are being placed out of district due to disciplinary reasons, not special education reasons. And then I just shared really high-level challenges that the department continues to, you know, work through, eligibility, staffing, looking at our specialized programs, enhancement to programming, out-of-district placements, specialized transportation, which I'm gonna talk about in a minute, and then overall the rollout of the new DESI IEP forms. Student behavior continues to be a significant challenge for the department as well as just the district as a whole. We are seeing very high referrals to our therapeutic program at this time. And our special education evaluations continue to grow tremendously. When I wrote this memo for you, we were at 166, as of, I believe that was November 30th. We are over 200 at this point in time, so we do anticipate surpassing last year's numbers significantly. So that is sort of the high-level status of where we are at, special ed-wise. We continue to do assessments of what our specialized programming needs are gonna be into the future as well as having some high-level conversations about what it is that we hope for in our programming and for our students who are serviced by the programs. So any questions about that information?
Just one clarification, Laurie, you just said, so since we had the memo that we heard in November, which was 180. What is the number now?
Um, are you talking, I'm sorry, you cut out, are you talking about specialized programs?
Um, so for the number of evaluations, in our memo it said 166, but what, what is it now?
He told me the exact number today and I have, I don't remember it, but we are over 200.
Over 200.
I can get you that exactly. So with that said, we are closely, sorry, I just wouldn't say, we're closely monitoring the contracted service we have for the evaluations at the Willet and I will be coming back to you to talk about where we are at and if we potentially need to increase that allotment. We had originally approved 41, as of today, I believe we requested number 20. So I have projections of what we have as far as three-year reevals coming up, but initials are kind of a wild card for us.
Do you have a sense of what this looks like across the state, like how we compare across the state in terms of out-of-district placements, rising, those types of things?
So interestingly, we were just called by another district today and asked what our out-of-district numbers are and they are putting together an analysis of the local districts, which they will be sharing with us shortly. But I can tell you that every district is struggling with this right now.
Yeah, it is, it is definitely a consistent problem across, now whether we're higher than others, but every district has seen an increase in the number of students requiring evaluations, qualifying for special ed and seen an increase in out-of-district placements, which then is, is causing problems, you know, getting kids placed too. We're also seeing that problem because they have the same, they have the same problems with staffing that, that the districts are having.
Any other questions on the update?
Alright, we ready for student service transportation?
We are.
Alright, let me rattle this one off quick to you as well, so there's a lot of information in this.
Alright, Laurie, can the slides actually be shared for this one?
Dave, can you, can you share them?
Can you proceed to the next slide, please? So I just shared with you all the regulations around transportation when it comes to special education. I'm not going to read these specifically, but on the next slide, I did highlight. I'm not going to read these specifically, um but on the next slide, um I did highlight some of the pieces. Um and um the first thing being, if the student does not require trans specialized transportation. Um as part, as a result of their disability, they are to access transportation as everybody else in the district does. So that is the first indicator. Um if regular education is noted in the student's IEP. However, we place them at a program away from their home school, even if it's still in district. We are required to provide them transportation from their home to that program. Um transportation is considered a related service, so we have to determine the student in or out of needing transportation. And um in no event shall a school district allow transportation considerations to influence, modify, or determine educational program requirements. So this is something that um we will be talking to you about more in the future. Um when we look at our model, our model of special education program. Um so current transportation needs, um this is a slide that Ms. Sheridan has shared with you all previously. Um I think we all can admit that it is a very um jarring image when you look at the twenty twenty one school year to the twenty twenty three school year. Um I want to remind folks that twenty twenty one was just coming out of COVID. We had a good amount of students not attending um schools during that school year. Um but I'd also like to just give you the high level story behind this change because it looks very significant. Um but there is um a lot of rationale behind why it is where it is today. So currently at LMPA, we are trans, there are twenty two students um who are eligible for specialized transportation. Twenty six of those students, twenty six students at LMPA are actually accessing transportation. So we have students accessing transportation who um are not eligible. And that's a a different situation we'll talk about. Um there at Willet, there are twenty three students eligible and nineteen students actually access it. So there are four students who are not accessing it who are eligible. At the elementary level, we have seventy two children, as I mentioned, early in specialized programs away from their home school. So they automatically um qualify for specialized transportation. But we do have twenty three students in specialized programs not accessing transportation. So we are keeping um very um tight reins on who does and does not qualify for specialized transportation. There are five students in the inclusion who access transportation at the elementary level and two hundred and twenty eight students who do not. Um so as you can see, there is a very um stringent process to go through with a team in order to be eligible for special education transportation. At the middle school. We have um eighteen students in specialized programs accessing it and nineteen students who do not access it. Um two students in inclusion and a hundred and fifty five that do not. Um as you see, as students get older, the the um use of transportation decreases significantly. There's all kinds of reasons as to why a child doesn't want specialized transportation the older they get. Um but at the high school, there are sixteen students in specialized programs who do, um and forty six who do not. Um there are seven students in inclusion that access it and a hundred and forty four who do not. So as you can see, the vast majority of our special ed students are not accessing transportation. Out of district, um a hundred percent of our students qualify because we are placing them at schools outside of the district. Seventy three students are currently eligible for transportation, um sixty nine are accessing it. Um and as I shared earlier, there are eighteen students who moved into district with out of district IEPs, all of whom qualify for transportation. So major influencers, as we see it, um specialized. So um the specialized program locations have a huge impact on our in district specialized transportation. Um move in, students who move into the district with IEP already on their IEP have a big impact. As well as, um I'm sorry if you can hear my children, um LMPA, um the number of students qualifying in LMPA is pretty significant right now. Um so those are the three things, um the proactive steps that we've taken. Um there's a new protocol in place um that all teams must use, as well as we have a transportation eligibility document. Um that has to be filled out um and um for each child and approved by me in order for them to access transportation. So that is the, um so our data came from Aspen. Um as well as um Al shared with me his spreadsheet so that we could cross-reference them. So that we made sure that our Aspen data and um the transportation department's data matched.
Any questions?
No questions, I just want to thank Miss Mino to, you know, for putting this together. You know, there's there's data and then there's the story behind the data. And I think it's important that we have both as we make decisions going forward.
David, any questions?
No, just thank you, um and definitely, I know you had said um Dr. Thompson would share out. It's the slides from the first part that would get posted with the IP updates, okay. Well, thank you very much, that was detailed, yet at the same time a great overview, so thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, um is there any? Are you able in any way, shape or form to predict transportation, transportation moving forward?
I'm sorry, can you say that again, I'm chewing kids away?
Yeah, and I'm hacking up a lung, so we're good tale right now. Um is there any way that um you can predict what um transportation may look like in the next budget cycle? I know that there's people moving in district, out of district, but in terms of students who potentially maybe are graduating or who are coming back in district, or or is there any trend that you can see um now? Which of course, we won't hold you to, I'm just looking for some good budget news somewhere, Lori.
I know you are, and I never bring good budget news, my whole guy is, um I don't see it getting any better. We have more and more kids qualifying, um more behavior issues that don't allow them to access the regular transportation. Um I believe I've had three requests in the last week um due to um uh behavior issues on the big bus that needed to switch over to specialized transportation. So unfortunately, it is a trend that is um trending upwards. Every time I walk in Al's office, he kind of sighs a little, um because he knows that I'm bringing a new request. So um we are very cognizant of the increase. Um it's why we put the protocols and measures into place, but it um it continues to be a very concern for us.
And we still have um monitors and video on all of our special education transportation buses.
And and regular, well, we don't have monitors, but 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 we have cameras on the regular buses too.
Okay, um how long, this is, I'm taking us a field for just one second, how long do we keep that data for?
You mean the video, the video data?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh I think it's several days before it tapes, it's basically a tape that tapes over itself or a disc that tapes over itself.
It's typically, yeah, it's typically a couple of days because if an incident occurs, both Al and I view the videotape. Um and it, there have been times that it's been forty eight to seventy two hours before we get to the tape.
Oh, Lori, you muted yourself there.
I did, because I have kids yelling, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
This is why I prefer to be in the office.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was taking us a field, so um are there any other questions? Okay, then I will stop taking us a field and say thank you very much, and time for the superintendent's update.
Yes, thank you very much. So this week's uh update, we're gonna talk a little bit about tech update. There is a full document in your uh agenda that goes into more detail, I'm just gonna talk about a couple of things. I had the privilege of attending the National Honor Society induction uh earlier this week, the topping off ceremony today. We will once again promote our job openings and uh there's another Mustang Sally collaboration coming up that I want to make sure we mention as well. Okay, so tech, um so tech will be uh bringing forth a request to modify the capital reserve fund. Uh this modification will increase tech's ability to plan for long-term needs. Uh the board of directors unanimously approved the request at this December uh meeting. Uh you will, we will get a uh request to hear and and listen to that. Uh and as you only vote if you dissent in making that change. Uh but it would uh actually increases tech's ability to to deal with long-term, you know, changes in tuition. Possibly uh buy a property as opposed to leasing and a few other things. Uh the other thing I wanted to mention about tech is that they did receive another clean audit report from Powers and Sullivan, and and we reviewed that at the last meeting. So I had the honor on Monday to attend the National Honor Society induction, where eighty two new inductees were recognized. Um I'm proud to confirm that not not only do these inductees represent academic scholarship, but also the biographical, as the biographical details uh shared Monday evening, they also prevent, possess strong character, leadership and service. The other three pil- pillars for NHS. Um what what's different about Norwood's um ceremony is that each student comes up, stands there, one of the officers reads a a short bio uh about the student, and you can see that they um all have come to this honor from different paths and different experiences. But they definitely represent um academics, character, leadership and service. And I just wanted to say congratulations one more time to them. Uh today was the topping off ceremony, uh for those of you who have missed some of the updates. Uh you can see the building behind there, you can see that white beam uh that was signed by uh students at uh the, at CMS as well as other dignitaries in the in the crowd. By the time I got there last Friday to sign my name, there was no room, but I signed over, no, I did, I found some room. Um but today's ceremony uh represents um the ceremonial finishing of the steel superstructure of the building. Uh and as we have mentioned before, the building is ahead of schedule. I don't think that this topping off ceremony was even thought about, that we would, that thought that we would get to it until the end of January, to give you an idea. Um and we are under budget, so things are going very, very well. I want to thank uh Vertex um and WT Rich for their leadership on the construction aspect of the prod- project. It was good to see our architect there, to uh Justin, to to uh Tebow, uh to to celebrate and and enjoy this um major milestone in the building. And it's kind of interesting, if you get a chance to look, you can see they, you know, they build kind of from the eastern, southern end uh to to um to the northwest end. And as they go, if you look at the far right, as you're looking at the building from behind the existing Coakley Middle School. You can see they've already started to put some of the uh wood and other things on top of uh the steel. So they just kind of keep moving, you know, right to left as they go, but it is um, it it's actually pretty amazing to watch them put the steel up. So and I know many people have commented about that. Um Jack McCarthy does kind of a weekly uh NCM, I'm gonna give a plug here, uh NCM update on the construction project. Uh and that is well worth it, but uh the community should know that we are ahead of schedule and under budget. And uh we're looking forward to the next, the next milestone. Once again, I'll mention uh job openings, we are still looking for uh daily substitutes. Those college kids that come home, we've already gotten a few in this week, uh doing some subbing for us. Still looking for an assistant transportation director. Uh confidential secretary of the school committee is technically still open, but I do have a final interview with the candidate later on this week. Uh we are looking for special education teachers, title one teacher, paraprofessionals, we need about eight of those. We are always looking for van drivers, especially to be um subs, so it might not be every single day. Uh but often we have van drivers who will take a chunk of time off and extended day staff are always needed. The last thing, uh Mustang Sally once again has been out and about and busy. Uh and we are announcing a collaboration um with uh Mustang Pizza. They are going to have a special Mustang Sally pizza, the pizza will be in the shape of a dog bone. The official flavor is pepperoni with a drizzle of honey and a pinch of sea salt, sea salt. But you can actually choose your own toppings. And again, uh ten percent of the proceeds will go to NPS and the Daddy Daily Dairy um Mustang Sally promotion is ongoing. So you can check that out as well, and that is the superintendent's update.
Awesome, thank you, we should do that for our meeting, we should uh.
Have a Mustang Sally pizza.
Sally, yeah.
Pizza delivered. Yeah, what 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 was that movie back in the, back in the eighties with the, with the student coming in and having the pizza delivered during class? It'll be right up there, right?
Fast Times at Ridgemont High.
Yeah, I think that's what it was, yeah.
For those of us who are old enough to remember that, okay, uh does anyone have any questions for Dave? Okay, uh Ms. Stewart and Mr. Wells for budget.
Yeah, I can get us started, the update will be short and then I'll hand it over. Um so in your packet, you have um the materials that we shared with the Finance Commission on December fourteenth. Um Miss Semino referenced that we were there. Um and you also have in your packet the materials, the agenda and the draft minutes from our subcommittee meeting on December fifteenth. Uh so first, we'll talk about FinCom briefly and then we'll talk about our subcommittee meeting. Um so many of us went to the Finance Commission meeting on the fourteenth, um Dr. Thompson, Miss Semino, um Matt Wells. Uh Ms. Sheridan uh came back to join us for that, uh Dr. Taylor, myself, Emery and Lisa Bourgeois, we were all there either in person or remote. Uh Ms. Sheridan gave the quarter one report to the Finance Commission that we as a school committee had previously seen. Um Miss Semino and Miss Bourgeois went over their um memos, um we talked with Lori tonight about hers. And Lisa will be coming to talk to us, I think on January tenth about the ELL stuff. Um overall, the meeting went uh very well. Um at the end, there were some questions and concerns raised by some of the members of the Finance Commission around the staffing of the new middle school. Um so you remember that on November fifteenth, uh Dr. Frazek came and presented staffing options to us. And at the time, the school committee had voted um to approve the more robust staffing of seventeen point eight five FTEs. Uh you may remember we had identified that this was probably gonna be a topic of concern and something that we would need to bring back to Budget Balancing Committee, um and that is true, we are going to need to do that. Um so as a subcommittee, on January fourth, when we meet again, um Dr. Frazek is gonna join us once again. And we're gonna work a little bit more on the narrative and the communication around why and how. Um we got to those seventeen point eight five FTEs, um but it is something that I just wanted to flag for the rest of you. Um I think we're gonna have to talk about it a little bit more. Um and then we met last Friday, the fifteenth, as a subcommittee. Um all the information that we previously received tonight from Miss Semino um was reviewed um in that meeting. And a lot of the information that is coming up on our agenda was reviewed. So in a moment, um Mr. Wells is gonna talk to us about the revised FY twenty five budget calendar. Um there are a couple of grants that need our approval tonight, and then later on in the meeting, Dr. Thompson is gonna talk to us about transportation staffing. Um in addition to those items, uh we talked a little bit more about the supplemental budget for FY twenty four, the fiscal year we're currently in. Um Norwood has slotted to receive three hundred and forty eight thousand dollars, um but it is yet not known when we will get that money or via what mechanism. So stay tuned for that. Um we continue to prepare for budget balancing, but unfortunately, a meeting is still not yet scheduled. Um we are advocating for a meeting in January. Um hopefully, that'll be sooner rather than later because there are a lot of decisions that need to be made. Um Dr. Thompson will come back to the school committee on January tenth with an analysis and an update on what's going on with human resources. Because as you know, that is part of our objective one, uh the Dr. Taylor is gonna talk to us more about um in today's meeting. Uh Mr. Wells is continuing to review the finance department structure and assignments and still collaborating with Ms. Sheridan on um getting caught up in some transitions. And then Dr. Thompson continues to work with the administrative team reviewing the ESTR funded positions. Uh as a reminder, ESTR funding will end in September, so we need to figure out what we're doing with those um almost twelve FTEs. Um he's also working with the admin team to assess the currently unfilled positions and to see if they can be reallocated or utilized elsewhere. Um and then lastly, I'm continuing to meet with Miss Semino on a regular basis um to look at different topics of student services and determine what needs to come back to the school committee. Uh so we will meet again as a budget subcommittee on January fourth. Um a reminder to many people in this meeting that I sent out the draft agenda for that meeting, if you could take a look at it by tomorrow. Um because we do want to get it posted before the break. um, because we do want to get it posted before the break. Um, any questions?
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Excellent. Thank you. Um, we do have a revised budget timeline that's in your packet. Uh, two changes to the timeline. Now, the first one is the uh, the budget workshop that was originally scheduled for December sixth has been rescheduled for January twenty-second. Um, same topics, uh, just moved down uh, to that date. And the second item was, we had a sort of an open house that we were going to schedule for uh, December fifth for uh, budget stakeholders to come and have conversations with the business office about uh, their budgets. Uh, I have a slightly different process that I, I like to uh, to utilize, and that is I keep my schedule very open over a larger period of time. So we've changed that, uh, that my schedule has been open since December seventh and will stay open until the eleventh to allow the principals to find time that fits in their schedule to be able to meet with me, and I will go to them um, and be happy to sit down with them and see their schools and um, talk about what uh, what their concerns are, where their anxiety is around budgets. Uh, I've already had a couple of meetings. I have a couple more scheduled. Uh, so this is um, going pretty well. Uh, some people very comfortable with budgeting, some people not so much. So um, you know, it's always uh, don't want to uh, bring everybody in a room and talk to them about budgeting for those that really, you know, feel pretty comfortable about it. So um, we would like to entertain a vote uh, to approve this revised uh, timeline.
Motion to approve.
Uh, Joan, just really quickly, one other thing that was added at the end, um, we needed to finalize with the Finance Commission, our meetings with them. Um, so the subcommittee will be going to the Finance Commission on March seventh for a discussion. And then we had previously talked about hoping that they would come to us on March twenty-seventh. So that's been added in. Um, so March twenty-seventh is our budget hearing. We're going to have the budget hearing first, and then we're going to roll into a joint meeting with the Finance Commission, which we've never done before. It's always been just a subcommittee going with them, but they are going to come to us and we're going to have a joint meeting. And then hopefully we approve and they approve.
Um, and have they already committed to that date?
They have, yes. Um, so Sarah Sullivan, who is our new liaison, she replaced um, Anne Haley. Um, she confirmed she was in her budget meeting. She confirmed those two dates.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the updated budget calendar?
No, moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the updated budget calendar?
Bye.
Uh, all opposed? Okay, so that passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Wells or Ms. Semino are for the grants?
Um, sure. So we have uh, two new grants that were approved um, from DESI, uh, the two seventy-four IEP federal TAR grant. Um, this is uh, DESI has recently um, rolled out their new IEP process or starting to. Um, and this grant will help us to move through that. The grant is thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Uh, and the second grant is a F three thirty-two SCL elemental health grant. Um, this uh, supplements the um, safety care trainers and mentoring program uh, that has been approved through the Town Warren article, and that is for sixty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Are there any questions?
No questions, just um, in addition to Mr. Wells spreadsheet, Ms. Semino did write a memo that details how each uh, grant will be allocated. Joan, would you like me to make a motion?
If you would like.
Okay. Uh, so I'll make a motion to approve um, the FC two seventy-four IEP grant for thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. And then the FC three thirty-two SCL mental health grant for sixty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Would you like to sec, I, I'll second that. I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Bye.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're supposed to be, I forgot we're remote. We're supposed to be, I'm supposed to be calling individually. David?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes three to zero.
Excellent.
Thank you very much, Ms. Semino and Mr. Wells. Do you, Ms. Semino did bring good budget money, good budget juju on this one. You brought money in this time.
I try what I can.
Um, okay, moving on to the long-term agenda. Excuse me, review. Teresa, I know that you had um, some thoughts about this. David, I know that you enjoy doing the organization of the long-term agenda, agenda. Would you like to do that or would you like me to do that?
Uh, I can do it. I was just in the wrong meeting, so now I have the link to it. So I'm good when you are.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I think most of the things I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page for are already put. So David, I don't know if there's too much editing you need to do, but um, hopefully tonight we're fine tuning Dr. Thompson's whole um, timeline of what that process is going to look like. So we probably, hopefully will not need to do that on January tenth. Um, but there's been a couple of topics that have come up in budget-related meetings that I just wanted to make sure is going to happen on the tenth, since the packet will be due soon after the break. So the first is having Lisa come um, to give us an update on ELL on January tenth. Um, the second, Dr. Thompson, is that HR update memo, um, so you can share the full committee of the work that you've been doing. Um, and then the third is related to some emails that I sent today around the elementary study. Um, I know we're going to have a brief update today, um, but it seems to me we need to get that back on the January tenth agenda as well.
I would say for the elementary study, a lot of that before we wreck the surprise is going to be um, you know, if we need to bump it off of that meeting in January, I think we can because a lot of it is related to time and making sure that that gets out and sort of, you know, our proposed timeline when we came in October, November. Um, you know, once that was approved, obviously it was proposed, so there may be some things there. So I don't know if the, that's a long way of saying I don't know if the update is going to change this. Um, but we'll see, so.
Yeah, maybe we can see how the strategic planning discussion goes later on in today's meeting. Um, because there may also be some follow-ups, subjective three and five, that I think we may need back on in sometime in January. I was just opposing January tenth because if you look at the rest of the long-term agenda, as we go throughout January and into February, we get very budget-heavy. And I know there's a lot of um, superintendent search stuff coming our way, and there's also um, the superintendent evaluation. So um, January tenth seems to be kind of open, and I would encourage us all to think now before break how we want to maximize that meeting so things don't snowball later into January, February. And then the other question, Joan, and this would be for Dr. Thompson and, and Mr. Wells, and we have not yet had a chance to really talk through quarterly reports yet with you, Matt. Um, but it was originally slotted that January twenty-fourth would be the quarter two report. Um, and I don't know if that's too soon, if you need to bump that into February, or if you think January twenty-fourth is feasible for that.
Uh, I think we could probably get there for the twenty-fourth, uh, but I'll, I'll have a conversation with uh, with Dave and, and make sure that we're all kind of in the same place.
Okay.
Okay, so most of this is, Teresa, you've made some requests, and that's really going to be up to Dave and Anne Marie about whether or not those can fit in on January tenth.
Well, most of them we talked about in budget already, and Anne Marie was on board, so I more just wanted to confirm again because packet material is due right after break, so.
Okay. Okay. All right, is there anything else for the long-term agenda?
Um, the only thing I'm looking at as we do this is it's going to be a really long end of January into February. Um, so I would ask now that we really try to hold that February fourteenth meeting to a very few, like very few things. So I think obviously the like budget A, um, you know, we want to do long-term agenda review, that's fine. Obviously, the superintendent search, um, you know, that may be more than ten minutes. Um, and the, you know, the appointee, if you have someone and you come and, you know, it's a chance to sort of ask questions um, and do that in an open, you know, uh, open setting with that. Um, so I guess that would be my only thing. I, I think that like the meetings look good and pretty organized and pretty reasonable right now. I know that can be subject to change, but I would ask that we really try to to hold to that.
I agree with that, and I think it's important to remember too, that once we get to the end of January, February and March, budget can be like an hour discussion, depending on what unfolds on with BBC and with this date. Um, so even though it looks like, oh, there's two items, I agree with what David's saying. Those are both longer, more detailed items. The other thing, and, and Dr. Taylor will probably be able to speak to this more at our next meeting, but we will have to figure out the student services warrant and, and when the RFP is coming to the school committee.
Yeah, we will.
Okay. Okay. I got it, right? I mean, anything else?
Just a question, David, maybe you're going to touch on this in your superintendent update, and if you are, we can wait, but um, are we gonna schedule, like get placeholder on our calendar for when we're interviewing candidates? Because, I mean, it's really hard to get the five of us together as evident by tonight.
Yes, we were working on that. Um, Kate has sort of been the um, point person on the scheduling the days with Jim. Um, so I can definitely, if I don't have, I won't have specifics tonight, but we definitely can um, get that to you guys as soon as possible. Because there was, you know, that was out to Jim, um, you know, about that, and there are a couple of other things, but I don't want to spoil the update. So I hear you, yes, and as soon as we have it, we will make sure we get it out to you.
Well, David, let's not spoil the update. Let's just use that as a segue to go right into it, assuming that the long-term agenda review is done.
Okay. Anything else on the long-term agenda? Are we good?
I think we're good.
Okay. So it's me?
It's all you.
Woo-hoo. Um, so we met on the thirteenth uh, of December with um, the whole group, all fifteen, um, and Jim. And on that night, we were there for, um, we were scheduled the three hours. It was six to nine, if I am remembering that correctly. Um, so a couple of things, the big thing we did, we had twenty-four full and/or what are called completed applications. Um, of those twenty-four, um, we went through um, and through a process that was outlined by uh, Jim, uh, went through and sort of whittled that number down. Um, we settled on nine, so we were going to be bringing nine people in for interviews. Um, that was most of the meeting. Uh, that took up about probably about two and a half hours um, of our allotted time. Um, we did, uh, Jim should be producing minutes if they're not already in the packet. Um, you know, for that, just because um, obviously it's an executive session and it's still confidential, as we're still going through this process, just to explain to the townspeople. Um, we had dates set. Those dates set were um, Monday, January eighth, Thursday, January eleventh, Tuesday, January sixteenth, and Wednesday, January seventeenth was our hold, uh, rain day, snow day, whatever, for um, interviews of individual candidates, uh, sort of first round. Um, in the process, we had established, so let me go back. I know that there was a document that was sent around to the school committee of sort of, uh, I would say like a needs, sort of skill, things to watch for list. So we did at the start of the meeting, because a question was asked in November, or the first time we had met, you know, what is the school committee looking for? So we did share that with the committee. Um, there was also a homework assignment about questions that I'll get to in a minute. So sort of as we whittled down, you know, those were some of our guiding principles as well as just the makeup of the committee and, and sort of the, the general discussion that goes along with um, with that. So because we chose nine, we will fill eight, eleven and sixteen. Again, Jim is scheduling those. Um, giving people off in options and specific nights for that. Um, because we chose a ninth, um, you know, Jim sort of gave, Jim, and again, for the general public, Jim is our consultant from um, MASC. Um, he sort of gave us some guidelines as to how, you know, how many you should cut down, what's the reality, what does it look like when you go to interview, how long that should take. So they have obviously a lot of the structures within those meetings that we have. Um, so we will actually spill into the seventeenth, so we actually are currently looking for another encased day, so snow day, weather day. Um, that we are working on finding. When we have that, we will update the committee with that as well. Um, and then the number that he had suggested, and we took his thing, is that from this group of nine, we will then, or the committee will then bring um, three finalists uh, to the school committee. And uh, Teresa, to your question, we are um, working on those days uh, as well. Um, I think there were some questions around just what those look like, obviously, you know, as you go to, to do those with the, the public portion of the meeting. We wanted to make sure we scheduled and, you know, worked out that they weren't necessarily broadcast live because you're giving an advantage to, you know, candidate who interviews first versus candidate you uh, interview third. Um, so again, when we have all of that from Jim, we will pass that um, on to all of you. So we are comfortable and we still feel good that we will make um, the timeline that we had set out to do. The other thing that we did in the meeting, which was the last piece, so again, just because of MASC's resources, um, you know, we were invited to either think of our own question, or we were, shared a sort of question book that MASC had put together over, you know, the numerous uh, searches they have helped um, and aided on. Um, so basically, we got to do a primary question and a secondary question. We sent it to Jim and um, he created and we were shaping the list. Um, and again, that was done sort of with um, you know, with some of the school committee sort of goals in mind there as well um, for the position. So we do not have that list finalized yet. He is still um, compiling, working on that, and we did some fine tuning and crafting. But obviously, we will have that ready to go before the eighth, um, so we can interview and do those questions. Um, and again, the next time, um, we have, we haven't had the update yet, but he will update us and we can pass that on to the committee as to um, you know, times, questions, all that good stuff. So um, that's where we're at now. Um, any questions from the committee?
No, thank you, David, to you and Kate for all that work, and it sounds like, you know, bringing in MASC and Jim Hardy has been very effective and efficient, which was the goal. Um, just a reminder to um, ask Jim for the contract. I don't think we, we've signed that yet.
Yes, we, he was reminded of that, but I will remind him again.
Yeah, and then if you can um, get it to Matt, but CC me, just so I can talk to Matt about the warrant money that we got for that and, and make sure we, we pay it from the appropriate line item.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, David.
Or, or if they're volunteering, that's cool too.
Yeah, no, I, we wish, we wish, but, but it is, and I would say, I, I think the strength really is, is twofold. Is the in-meeting efficiencies, because they've done this, like, and because the consultants, you pay for the knowledge. They have the materials and knowledge, which has, I think, helped move things along very quickly. Um, or efficiently, and along with that, um, because MASC actively is involved in other searches, um, not that they violate any confidentiality or open meeting laws, just they have a knowledge of the system, they have a knowledge of how these, these play out and how they work. Um, so it has been very, I think, reassuring to both Kate and I as school committee members, but to the greater committee is to um, you know, sort of the information and knowledge that we have um, available to us as we go through and do this.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? All right, middle school building committee update.
Woo-hoo. Teresa, were you there last time or no?
No, I was unable to go, so it's all you, David.
Oh, thanks so much. Um, okay, so we met on the eleventh, Monday, the eleventh, for our monthly MSBC um, meeting, and again, Dave sort of stole the thunder here, which is great. Um, they did have the topping off ceremony. Um, today ceremonial for again, this sort of superstructure. You'll also notice if you go by the building that um, it's wrapped like in heavy tarps. I haven't been up there since Monday with the, you know, before the storm, so who knows if any of those tarps blew off. Um, but they're beginning to encase the building in that, get ready to begin, you know, still roughens, but then pouring the concrete slabs for the floors. I mean, obviously, um, that work will continue and sort of echoing um, Dave's two big things is that um, one, things are ahead of schedule, um, which is good. Um, and obviously, two, um, under budget as well. So on time and under budget um, were our two um, big things. The meeting itself was relatively short. We did get an update just about, you know, this is when the topping off will be, this is, you know, some of the set up pictures of the site. Um, we have, we're looking at a couple of, um, you know, just discussion of maybe We have, we're looking at a couple of, you know, just discussion of maybe some possible change orders. I know we're still waiting to get, you know, what the figure is with the state had gone back and due to the high cost of inflation as, you know, our cohort of our building project and others were in there, the state did allocate money. So we will be getting some more and, you know, value engineering, the fancy word for having to remove things from the project, which obviously that goes back over a year that we were doing that. We should be, and I don't know if it's called revalue engineering or bringing back engineering, where some of those discussions will begin to happen as we move along and and get to the point where we begin to have to make, you know, some of those decisions as the building itself continues. The other thing is, you know, Teresa, I think you were at the meeting in November where we did ask for future meeting dates. Those should be posted, but I will just say Monday, January 8th, at 4:30 will be our next one. We'll go Monday, February 12th, Monday, March 11th, Monday, April 8th, May 13th. I don't know if that is a Monday or not, but there was concern around our meeting. They did move it early to 4:00 PM. So all of them are 4:30 except May 13th, which is 4:00 PM. And then June 10th, which will be a Monday and at 4:30 as well. So that is what our next six months worth of meetings look like. Questions from the committee?
David, on those dates, can you just send them to Donna and Priscilla so they can get them on our school committee shared calendar? That's a little different than the postings.
Yep.
And then at the November meeting, we were discussing like the trees, because there's a lot of outreach from the community of saving trees and or planting new trees. And I noticed that we had a, we paused the discussion in November. Was that finalized at the meeting last week?
That was not.
Okay.
Nope.
Are they still looking into the costs? Is that why it wasn't finalized yet?
That was my understanding.
Okay, just want the community to know that, you know, a number of concerns raised, it was heard, and they're just figuring out, I think, which type of tree that is being planted. But it's along where the current parking lot is on the side where the buses are, and then also down by the Little League field, trying to, you know, replace some of the trees that had to be unfortunately removed elsewhere.
Yes.
And David, you did say that they're looking to, I don't know what, unvalue engineer some pieces for long-term maintenance, like some of the things that had been cut. Now that we're under budget, are we looking at replacing some of those things?
I think that, and then the big thing they're waiting for before we really start that process is because we are going to be getting more money from the state, you know, there will be monies that will be available to spend. You know, I don't want to speak for the committee, but I would imagine, you know, like when we had to value engineer, we had a lot of conversations around form function, you know, what is essential, what is sort of decorative or nice to have, but is not going to necessarily impact the functioning of the building. So I would imagine, you know, that we will go back to a lot of those. So the example, you know, was one of the examples was just with like solar and all of that, that we had cut down. We cut some of that. However, when we cut it, we also said, let's make sure we have the conduits. Let's make sure that we've put the infrastructure when the ground and everything is open, that if something came back, you know, or the budget magically got better, which it has, that, you know, those conversations could be back on the table. So I think it'll be in the coming months that we have a clear picture of that and and what that looks like.
I mean, I know Paul Ricardi has a good handle on
Yes.
those types of things. But it it, I know it does sound silly, but even something as silly as tile only coming up two feet versus coming up six feet. It sounds silly, but it makes a huge difference in the 20-year running of the building in terms of replacement costs and cleaning costs and those types of things. So
Yes.
I just, I guess I'm just putting my pitch in that the committee look at the long-term costs and not just the short-term costs as we look at what's value engineering and something as silly as tile can end up costing us, you know, 20 times more than it would have to just put it in from having to replace drywall when.
Totally.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I think we're in agreement with you, Joan, and Paul Ricardi does a great job advocating.
He does. I know. I'm just, I guess I'm just amplifying Paul Ricardi here. That's all I'm really doing.
But it's also helpful for David and I to have direction of what to advocate for and vote on. So, thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the Middle School Building Committee update? Okay. Strategic plan. For Taylor, Dr. Thompson?
Good night, everybody. So tonight I'm going to present on a few of the strategic objectives. I'll just say in full transparency, objective five, 5.1 and 5.2 have been paused due to competing needs in the district right now. But I'm going to present on objectives one, two, and three for tonight's update. So for objective one,
Oh, that's a good one. Sorry. I'm just wondering if maybe Dr. Thompson, you want to pull up the template? I think it might be easier for the community if they can see. And Dr. Taylor's done a really great job putting this together.
Sure. Might be a little hard to read, but yeah.
Okay. So objective one, this primarily is focused on aligning school and general government resources. So we're talking specifically about financial systems, facilities and human resources. And how do we leverage both those funding pipelines to best support our schools? We have had, uh, let's see, if I look at here, there have been a number of conversations I'll highlight around payroll and HR and how the general government has supported the school district. One of the things that we have rolled out are paperless hiring forms. So one of the forms of one of the backlogs, I'll say, that we experienced in the hiring process was that there's a lot of paper that floats between buildings, which causes a bottleneck for a number of our school administrators as we're trying to continually hire staff. So we have implemented paperless processing there. We also, there have been, the facilities budget was presented on November 15th. And there's been a lot of improvement and I think a greater alignment between the, within the reporting structure such that it meets the DSC requirements, which is something that we've been working on in the past year. And the other things, we think about what's coming on next. Planning for the facilities FY25 budget. Staffing, we need to think about staffing for not just our school, not just the schools in general, but also need to begin to think about middle school staffing. The last finance commission, there was some discussion around that. And then we need to review the joint facilities MOU to ensure that we're adhering to the process to what was agreed upon in that agreement. If we scroll down to objective two, we are primarily focused at this time on the elementary study work group. So that group met for several months over the summer and fall. We have reached the point where we do have a vendor selected and the district and the town are in the middle of revising the contract. So we're in contract negotiations to begin that work. When we take a look at objective three, which is focused specifically on innovative instruction and personalized learning. Here, we've been focused on how do we leverage our elaborate structures such as professional development, PLCs, our data teams, and beginning to build coherence around what our tiered supports look like. So in terms of instruction, we've been focused primarily last year and this year on small group instruction and using data and to be able to determine appropriate grouping for students. We have also been focusing on social emotional learning. So we have rolled out character strong. Grades one through eight, I believe, from elementaries and middle both use that. The high school continues to use Highlander and focus on culturally responsive work. The curriculum adoption, we're in the process right now of revising the visual arts. Is in the process of going through a refresh process in addition to the wellness curriculum. And Dr. Munoz will talk more about that later on. And as we think about our secondary school PD, they are focused primarily on higher order thinking. And there have been several rounds of, there have been several instances of instructional rounds where district administrators have had the opportunity to collaborate with high school staff and doing classroom observations and examining a problem of practice. As we think about what's ahead, we still need to continue to do some refinement around data-driven decision-making. So there'll be some interim assistance administered in February 2024. The academics team intends to conduct surveys in January. That'll be focused on getting insights around the effectiveness of the initiatives, the academic initiatives that are currently in play. And then we will continue on with our PD plan for spring of 2024. If we go down to, and I'm just highlighting a few things instead of going through the entire document. If we go to Strategic Initiative 3.2, that is focused primarily on looking at our core instructional programs, our core curriculum. What we see here is at the secondary level, well, at the elementary level, my view, reading curriculum and STEM scope is underway. As we think about moving forward, we continue on with improving our use of data to drive our instructional practice. And we'll see that there, we look at monitoring and evaluation. There's a schedule listed for all of the schools around a regular review of performance data that the academics team will be engaged in, and you can see the schedule there. As we look at Strategic Initiative 3.4, that one is focused on implementing inclusive practices for multilingual learners and for students with special needs. And that work has the work to be done there. There was a meeting around inclusion and around developing a coherent state definition of inclusion that happened in September. That work will continue to be ongoing. And we've also received the warrant for, at town meeting, for a student services audit. That group met last week. And was it last week? Yes, I think it was last week. The days are running again. Last week, we have begun to examine models of student services requests for proposals. And we've done some analysis around what are the preferred components that we want to see in our audit. But we still have some more work to be done there in addition to creating a timeline for what the spring rollout of the RFP will look like. As I shared before, objective five, 5.2 and 5.3 specifically, we're not going to report out on those. That work is paused at this time. And with objective 5.4, we have done a great bit of work. Thank you to Hugh and the high school team. They revise and the middle, our counselors in the elementary and middle schools. Number of groups have worked together to be able to revise our school emergency operations plan. One of the addendum amendments that were made were, one, a revision to the bullying procedures and policy. And there was a supplemental manual for how to provide counseling, support and mental health services during a crisis. So this is a manual that counselors can pick up and determine how do they interject and a manual for administrators to think about how are you using your counseling support more effectively when an emergency happens? We also, as an administrative team, took a field trip to our evacuation site and got an opportunity to think about and begin to strategize how we're placing students where, what the, you know, pickup protocols will look like and things like that. That process for us has illuminated some fine tuning that we need to do. And we're going to spend the spring collecting that material, doing that fine tuning, so that in the event of emergency, we are ready to go. And at this time, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
I have a few, but Joan or David, did you want to go first? Do you have any?
Go ahead.
Okay. So Dr. Taylor, thank you for this update and and working on this form. We got it this morning. I reviewed it this morning. I sent out an email with a couple of questions and Dr. Taylor, Dr. Munoz, thank you for answering a couple of those questions. That was very helpful. I have some bigger picture stuff that Dr. Thompson, maybe more for for you. So my first question is around this form, which Dr. Taylor is doing an amazing job with. However, it's very heavy on her time and her efforts. And we used to have the dashboard that I know is not always user-friendly, and I know came with a heavy price tag, but it feels to me that we need a more efficient way. So I guess I'm just putting out on the table that I would like us as a district to look into another data collection, reporting system for going forward. I know we're using it this year. And again, Dr. Taylor, you're doing a great job. This is not a criticism on on you, but I just think we need a more efficient and effective tool. Unless the administrative team thinks that this is working.
Yeah, so this is, this is the format from the strategic plan that we did with Highlander, and and this is basically their form.
Well, with Mass Insight, I know, I was in the session, but it doesn't allow us to, it's just very time-heavy on on Dr. Taylor. I mean, we used to have that dashboard and it lived on our website. And, you know, the leads were each responsible for going in there. And I know it wasn't user-friendly. I know there's a lot of things we didn't like about it. But it seems that we can't as efficiently track progress and get updates.
Yeah, the, yeah, so we would, you know, in order, in order, in order to use a dashboard, you have to build a plan around the tool you're going to use. So otherwise it doesn't, which is kind of what happened the last time around. We did the planning, we did the plan, and then looked for a way to report out. It didn't quite fit as well. It was receiver friendly in that they, you could see, you know, red, yellow, green. But, you know, I mean, if that's something the district wants to look at and put into the budget going forward, we could probably do that. You know, for next year, you're going to need to make a decision because this plan expires in in May of 24. So, you know, need to make the decision on whether you're going to sit tight, you know, with a new process, a new person starting in the fall and have kind of a gap. But that's probably what should happen.
Teresa, what are you looking for? What, what are you looking for? What's? What do you want to see that's different, I guess? I'm having trouble like figuring out what you're asking for.
Yeah, Joan. Before I answer that completely, can I just share one other question? Because it ties into like, what am I looking for? Okay. So also here, and I understand why this happened because I was part of all the strategic planning, but we pulled out some of the objectives, like objective four isn't on here at all. And in objectives one, two, three and five, we hyper-focus on certain initiatives and understand why, because there was way too much. And I know we tried to focus on the ones centered around, you know, DEI work and SEL work, and I'm not disagreeing with what we decided to do. In the fall, when we were working with Mass Insight, there was a discussion and there was concerns raised by some of the principals that even though these were a priority, there are still all of the elements of our strategic plan. Some of them have been completely paused, some we felt like were in good standing and we needed to maintain, and some we were going to come back to. And in the fall meetings, there was a question to Mass Insight of how and who would monitor that progress? And we haven't been getting those updates. So I'm also wondering, in addition to this form, what's going on with the rest of the strategic plan? And if you go to our website and you don't watch our meetings, it's very misleading because what's on our website is the old dashboard and is the strategic plan before we revised it. So I guess what I'm looking for is this form. That takes a lot of Dr. Taylor's time. I truly believe there must be an efficient and effective tool out there, number one. Number two, how are we getting updates on the entire strategic plan? And then number three, we need to then communicate accurately to our community on our website, and currently we're not.
Okay, so to me, number three seems like an easy fix, right? Let's get the inaccurate information off the website.
I agree. And it's also tied to the old dashboard. So remember the dashboard, Joan?
Oh, yeah, I remember the dashboard.
Yeah. Yeah, at one point I was the lead and I was supposed to be entering data and I was like, oh my gosh, I hate this. But you all know I hate technology. Don't tell jokes. And I know for a while when Dana Brown was here in his role, he took the lead on getting all the data in. But we were able to see in real time what was updated, where the progress was. Do you remember, Joan?
I do remember. I'm going to have trouble going for something like that again, though, because the, that type of a dashboard is expensive. We're a district that runs so lean, and not only is the dashboard expensive, it's like, it's like how we kind of need a communications director, right? Like, but we don't have a communications director. So if we have that fancy dashboard, we're going to have to hire somebody to do the fancy dashboards. So I understand what you're saying. I wonder if some of this is just a matter of stripping down. I guess the question I'm gonna, I guess what I'm going to toss back is, I feel like these are important questions that need to be asked as this current strategic plan expires. As, and we move into a new strategic plan. Because part of the problem is, we've been talking about since I've been on the board, our strategic plans are too big. Our strategic plans have 27 different things on them, which is why it's so hard to track. And so maybe some of this can get taken care of by having a simpler strategic plan, which does not mean a less important or less effective. It just means a more feasible and achievable strategic plan. Focused, thank you to whoever said focused. Thank you, Dave. A more focused strategic plan. But the immediate solution, part of, part of the immediate solution to what you're saying is let's get what's out there accurate and stripping it down. And then maybe we talk about, you know, we're going to need to come up with a gap strategic plan anyway. And we address how it gets reported out then, so that this is something that goes on at a later point in time. Does that make sense what I'm saying? I'm kind of rambling now at this point.
No, it does. And I agree with most of what you're saying, Joan. I'm also just thinking too, I mean, we asked the principals to tie in their school improvement plans to the strategic plan. And a lot of the work, especially at the secondary level for both the Copley and the high school is tied to Objective 4, which is program and pathways, which is not on here at all. So again, I know, I understand why it's not on here, but it's still very important work of the district. And we, as a school committee, still have the responsibility to have an update on it. So just asking, how are we going to get that update going forward? And then just really a mindful, this takes a lot of time for Dr. Taylor to do. And I truly believe there's a more efficient way that it should be getting done.
Yeah, I mean, you know, as far as any sort of reporting getting done, someone has to put it into some sort of form. So whether it comes out as, you know, a, you know, temperature gauge or color scheme or whatever, someone still has got to put the data in to whatever is going to be, you know, coming out, the essential. You know, and again, when this, when this strategic plan was done, there were lots of things that needed to be done in the district. Tremendous amount of work that needed to be done. That probably, we probably should have done a three-year plan and then, and then maybe come back and done another three years, something, instead of trying to do a five-year plan with the amount of, I mean, most strategic plans have got three major categories, not, we have five. Okay, they have four or five objectives under them. We have eight, nine in some cases. So part of the problem is not the capture, it's the amount of information we're trying to capture. So this represents trying to prioritize and focus on the big ones, especially in the, you know, after, after the equity audit and the equity work. I can tell you number four is happening. We have reported out on the career pathways and the additional two career pathways that we are working to pilot and set up for this year. So, you know, we can definitely report out on, you know, number four at some point. You know, come, come the new year, there has been work going on with that. It is not necessarily in this document that we agreed to in the fall. So.
Joan, can I just share two more things? I, I do understand what you're saying, Dave, and maybe you and I can talk more on a one-on-one sometimes because part of what I'm saying, I think, is getting lost in translation, so I can try again later. But I also think that there has to be a lot of shared responsibility in this. And I know that came up in the fall, like leads and who was leading each one. And like, just for example, Objective 1 is very heavy a collaboration between the admin team and the budget subcommittee, like all of those things Anne-Marie and I are checking on. It's on our budget long-term agenda. We're helping to support the work and getting done. And I see opportunity, you know, across all of this for that. Objective 2 I have questions about, but I'll wait until you do the elementary study in a moment. But if you could scroll up, Dr. Thompson, a little higher for Objective 5? Because Dr. Taylor said unfortunately we had to pause 5.2 and 5.3. But these were critically important ones that came out of the equity audit. And there was a lot of discussion about why these were priorities and why we wanted to keep them forefront for this year. And, and now we've had to pause them because we don't have the appropriate resource and staffing in place. And when the school committee in August voted to approve that these were the most important initiatives, 5.2 and 5.3 are what we voted on. So if they're now paused, I think as a school committee, we have a responsibility to say, well, wait a minute. We said these are really important. If we're lacking staff or resources, how do we rectify that? So how do we rectify it, Dr. Thompson, so that 5.2 and 5.3 can happen?
Well, five, I mean, 5.2, we are in the process of doing trauma-informed PD at this point in time, and we are implementing a brand-new social-emotional curriculum. So I think it might be more of a data piece and having a conversation around that than it is, we're not doing anything on it. So I don't know, I don't know if anyone else has, has any suggestions on 5.3, but you know, there are things that are going on, on the district that, about connections with families and diverse cultures. I think we need to spend a little more time capturing that.
Last thing I'll say, and here's what I'm struggling to. So this is a high level of the strategic objectives and initiatives. There's an entirely different document that shows the action plan and the action steps. And in past years, the school committee approved the whole thing. In August, we were told to only approve the objective and the initiative and that the action steps would be under, under you, Dr. Thompson, and you would make sure that they're happening. Clearly, they're not happening. If we now have 5.2 and 5.3, that since our last update, there's been no progress. And if we go back and look at that fuller document with the action steps, and this is going to be some of my questions on Objective 2 in a few minutes. If those action steps need to be modified, I could understand, but I have to be told. And what are the challenges and what are, what is the resolution?
So the question you're asking is why have these been paused?
Why? And then what can we do? Because my understanding for a lot of 5.2 and 5.3 is it comes back to budget and staffing and resources. And that is 100% under the authority of the school committee to have that discussion and see how we can support.
Go ahead, Teresa.
Yeah, just to give a little context, so the update that's here is based on that plan, the action steps in that plan. So particularly 5.2, some of the, the work, the initial work to be done was around building a coherent statement, equity statement. As a district, we don't have one. That requires someone pulling together administrators and other staff, facilitating a variety of meetings, doing the work of creating that coherent system. Around the 5.3, around the family engagement, it was about building a robust set of opportunities for families to engage with our teachers and with our, with our school communities essentially. So a lot of that work is, it's not about doing what we've been doing, it's about improving what we're doing and stepping it up a notch, but also at a district level, supporting what schools are doing with district-wide events and supports and resources. So I just wanted to give some context there, that that's what's in the, the step-by-step action plan that unfortunately we're not able to provide because of our staffing situation.
And I'm gonna be blunt, when you say our staffing situation, you mean we do not have the staff that can do this, which is a budget issue?
Correct.
Dr. Taylor, thank you for, for that. And we can maybe, I know there's still more items on our agenda and we have to go into executive session, so we can always come back to this. But I do think there's resolution in those challenges. And, you know, in the spring, Jill Driscoll came to us and asked for some budget money to be used in a certain way. Then at the time, we said no, because we didn't have additional funding to have that engagement, a community engagement person. Perhaps we do now, I don't know. As we look at other, you know, title money and other grant money. And, you know, another discussion that we continue to have around unfilled positions, you know, there's FTEs that are not being filled. So we are capped at five FTEs. But perhaps we have some unfilled FTEs that we could reallocate and get in to support this work and to support Dr. Taylor, that a lot of this work, you know, feeds up to her and her job description. But I am not faulting Dr. Taylor in any way. She is one person. But if there's a way to get the resources and the staffing in, we should be critically and creatively figuring out how to do that.
So what's the action step coming out of this? What, what action step do you see coming out of this meeting, Teresa? Obviously, we can't solve that right now.
No, oh, no, I know. I, I guess I, I would like a proposal for how do we solve it? And, you know, maybe it comes the budget subcommittee first because we start a lot of analysis there and then we bring it back to the school committee. But I would like proposals and options on the table for us to discuss.
Okay, so where would that fit on the long-term agenda?
I would not be the one writing the proposal or the options, so I don't know what other people have in terms of bandwidth. We meet as a budget subcommittee on January 4th and January 18th. It would be great if it could happen at one of those meetings and then we bring it back to the school committee by the end of the month. But I don't know if that is feasible for our admin team.
So I'm going to push a little bit too and say, is it accurate to say one of the proposals would be, this is not feasible at this time because we do not have the budget to do so? Is that a possible proposal? I just want to, I'm tossing out all the options.
Are you asking me?
Yes.
I would not want to see that proposal. I, I think there's options here.
I think this ties into a larger conversation, whereas this begins to end. And the district in the next six months is going into a transition. I don't want to lock ourselves and I don't want to lock the person that's coming in, who's going to have the opportunity from an outside perspective to look at things and offer feedback and thoughts. You know, do that. I think another thing around strategic planning, and this is both from the consultant and the other districts that I've worked in, is that due to the volatile nature of budgeting and budgeting in public schools and all of this, that strategic plans have been really cut down. So a lot of places now only do about three years. So you sort of put your plan in place and year one, you get everything organized, you do track, collect data, and then by year three, you're sort of making decisions. So that is also a, a trend. You know, it's not to, to say that any of this work is not important, but I just think that, you know, you have, you have that, you have the building project, you have the budgeting around filling space to make sure that when we transition into a new building, that's five through eight, getting that up and running. I think that there's obviously with strategic planning, there's a lot of overlap. An excellent one I will actually plug is if you go to the Canton Public Schools website and look for their strategic framework. It's excellent because although it is concise, I think it's a large umbrella where there's a lot that comes under it. So they highlight some things, but also have that. You know, just something to look at, but I think that that's a much larger discussion and just with, with everything that I've already heard between hiring a new superintendent, the middle school, obviously a rough budget season that is going to begin to take up January to April. I just, I have concerns, the superintendent's evaluation, I have concerns about the bandwidth, not just of the administrators, but also of the five of us with this. So I, I think that, you know, what Teresa said, I don't disagree, but I just think that it's, you know, it's, it's that finite amount of infinite amount of things, finite amount of time and, and making a lot of difficult choices in the next six months. So.
I think one thing we need to be cognizant of as well is that our central admin staff is young with us. In that we have a large number of key positions who have been with us for three years or will be with us for three years or less, along with half of our, I think almost half of our elementary school principals, right? And so there is something to be said for making sure the foundation is solid and steady before we start. You know, we got to make sure the bottom rungs of the ladder are as solid as they can be before we start reaching up. So I, I I'm hesitant to embark on an ambitious strategic plan. You know, as this one ends, I, I think I'd like to see a, a gap type one that we set the priorities around, making sure the infrastructure is steady and stable so that we can achieve when we move forward. So.
Joan, I hear what you're saying and I agree. And David, I, I hear and agree with, with most of what you're saying as well. I, I guess I'm just feeling that we approved a strategic plan, right? It's our job to monitor, the governance, the monitoring. The school improvement plans feed up to this. Goals feed up to this. So at the highest level, the work isn't being, the momentum is not moving forward. At the highest level of the strategic plan, then I am led to believe that it is not happening and school improvement plans are goals. And if that is true, that is a problem. And if it's not true, then we need to be informed of where progress maybe happened and just isn't captured on this document.
Yeah, I think, I think it's partially a capture problem. You know, I will remind everybody that we have added three more things onto the plate this year since we did this plan last spring. So, big things.
Joan, just saying, I need to shift the location in my home. So I'm going to turn off my camera for a few minutes as I move, but I'm still here, still listening, and I will be right back.
Okay, well, hang on, can, can you give me one second before you do that? Is there anything else for the strategic plan?
Um, no, I'll, I'll wait till David, David gives the update on the elementary study and then talk about Objective 2.
Okay, let's move on to that then. As you're transitioning, let's transition to the elementary. The, I'm sorry, the elementary study update.
One piece of hair that continues to fall in the middle of my face.
I was going to comment on the shaggy look, but I left off.
So with the elementary study update, obviously from late October, early November, you know, there were questions about, just to remind the committee and the public at home, there were questions about which way to go. Do you do the RFP? Or do you, you know, go ask for more money because one of the bids that came in was much, much larger? We went with the RFP. So in that group, that is a state outlined process. So you have to collect a certain amount of bids, you have to do the things, accept the things. You know, obviously Karen helped sort of move that along, you know, through her listserv and her expertise and from other districts, I think what we were looking for, I, I think it's two things, right? Is that when we had started this, the whole purpose with elementary study really was we had focused on, okay, like sort of the, the gap. We're going from six, one through fives to now we're going to have five, one through fives. And then we're going to move into a five-through-eight middle school. And what we wanted to know is, okay, what do we need? One, to get there, two, what's going to happen when that space opens in the elementaries? And sort of three, what's the best way to do that? Obviously, through this process, we have gathered input from stakeholders, whether that's transportation, special ed, building principals, sort of the people that are going to be our, our experts here. So where we're at in that process is that, you know, we had voted to approve the RFP, we did with, I'm going to forget the name of the company right now, but it was a company that was used for sort of similar things. I think as we went forward with that, some of the feedback we got was, you know, we wanted a little more in-depth. And I think this is something that happens, is that as you gather more information and you know more, you want to do more. You know, I think, you know, sort of getting to co-chair this with Kate, I think our sort of conversation and, and understanding was always, you know, this is going to lead to more questions, that's part of it. But we need to stay focused on the track and the work that we need to, to make sure that we're ready for 2025 when the opening of the new building. So just updates and the committee has not So just updates and, and the committee has not formally met since then. Um, Dave and I had a conversation, you know, just to update. And please, Dave, feel free to, to jump in. So I think this was to, to speak to some of Teresa's concerns. Um, and, and Dr. Taylor, you had also said this too, so I appreciate it. Is that due to the fact that, you know, part of that process is state outlined in law, um, that the purchasing agent, um, and acquisition for the town, um, you know, wanted to see the contract. There was some back and forth, um, not between schools and the town, between, you know, our side and, um, the company. Um, so we are still, um, in the process of finalizing and getting to sign that contract. With the second piece, which I think, um, was to some of Teresa's concern, and, and I hear that. Um, you know, when we voted, we did a proposed timeline, um, to, to approve. And part of that was knowing, listen, you know, if we accept this group, which is, you know, the lower bid, um, you know, and maybe not all the bells and whistles, um, you know, that there would still be some time as that contract got put together and then went out to bid. We're not totally off our timeline yet of that proposed timeline. I, I hear the concern for, you know, are we gonna get the work done? Will it be enough in time? I think sort of the bigger conversation and what we're gonna have to get to is, you know, we, we need this group to do the work. Obviously, you know, that'll come back to, um, elementary subcommittee or the working group, whatever that, that form takes. I think where there needs to be some conversation is, you know, we, we're expecting that we're gonna be getting this in the spring. Um, you know, so April or May. And we just need to make sure that, you know, in the most inclusive and efficient manner, you know, we get the information that the study has given us, um, get it out to those that need it and begin to make some decisions. So, um, not a super exciting update, um, but that is the update, obviously. Um, when we have that all signed and done, that will be shared with the committee. Um, Dave or Dr. Taylor, have I missed anything there?
No, um, I don't, I don't think so. We are working with the town purchasing agency to get that contract exercised so that we can, um, have that conversation about the timeline and the start.
Any questions?
Joan?
Yes.
Um, thank you, David and David for the update. And then also thank you, Matt and David, for, um, sending the contract earlier that is being negotiated. That was helpful to see. Um, again, I, I do hear what everyone is saying and I do fully understand how busy everybody is in all of our roles. Um, it is still, however frustrating that we approved that contract five weeks ago. And it was told to us that the contract was going to be taken care of before the Thanksgiving break. And although I understand things sometimes need to shift and timelines change, and the timeline that was previously approved by us, that work was starting this month and meetings were supposed to happen and certain data collection was already supposed to start. So I guess similar to what I was saying about 5.2 and 5.3, if things are changing, I just need to know what is the new timeline. And part of this is because we are going into budget season and Anne Marie and I, on behalf of the school committee, will be in many, many meetings with the finance commission and with the budget balancing committee, where we spend a lot of time advocating for what is needed for the schools. And this was a warrant article that we advocated for successfully. And it's uncomfortable to me to potentially go back in a few weeks and not be able to talk about why we're behind. That is a very uncomfortable position for me to be put into. And I just again want to know, how are we moving forward? What are the challenges? What are the resolutions?
Well, I will, uh, remind everybody that we did have a leave of absence, um, in the business office. Uh, we are, we have also transferred between, um, the former business manager and the interim business manager. Uh, the contract was sent out. The, the, they did not immediately respond. I'm not quite sure whether that was a capacity issue on their part or whatnot. Um, you know, so it, it is in process. I'm, you know, when we have that conversation, we're still gonna be looking at us. I'm gonna be pushing for a similar end date. Um, but again, you know, I'm hoping that we can have that contract signed so that we can have that conversation sooner rather than later. But I can't, I can't answer the, what is the timeline going to be until they are on board.
Can I ask that before the break, which is in a day and a half? That you at least schedule the next working group meeting? Because we all know we're gonna get back from break and there's so much going on in January. January's gonna go by and it's so hard to get all of us in working groups together. And I think you need to have that meeting on the calendar.
So what, what's the worker, what, what's the working group gonna work on? Because we're gonna be talking to the vendor about the timeline.
So this is, I, I, we can say that. I think there needs to be conversation around what that looks like, but none of that happens until we have the information. I, I think the way that I understood it was this would go out to contract, the work would be done, we would do this. And then really the next time that that group really gets together and begins to make decisions is gonna be when we have the report in hand.
That's not what it said on objective two in the action plan. So maybe everybody should go look at that again.
And I will just say, I hear that, but things come up and we need to allow for flexibility. And it's hard because we've just listed all of the things that have happened. And I know you're not trying to make it personal, but it feels personal when you say we're not doing our job when we've explained what has happened, the obstacles that we have faced and how we're moving forward to do that. But we will take that request. I will reach out to Kate and we will have an email by Friday.
So David, my request is really for Dr. Thompson. And I, I mean, I do not mean this to be personal, but I cannot do my job on the budget subcommittee if other pieces of things don't come together. And I'm, I'm just candidly telling all of you, I feel very uncomfortable going into BBC and the finance commission if I cannot answer questions and if I cannot justify. I will justify if things need to change, but I need to understand why. And I need to feel confident that there's a plan going forward. So that is what I'm asking for, the plan going forward.
Okay, so I think part of what's going on here is there's been a lot of change. Um, that's been taking place over the past couple of months. When is the next BBC? And Teresa's feeling like she is going into meetings and not being prepared when things are changing with explanations and justifications for why. When is the next BBC and FinCom meeting?
So this is part of the frustration to you. I do not know. We were supposed to meet as BBC in December. Um, certain members of BBC did not want to meet in December, but the finance commission and the, and the school committee is pushing for a meeting in early January. So I'm just trying to get us all prepared for, for those discussions. And then unfortunately, what's probably going to need to happen, because we're a little behind, um, is weekly meetings for all of January, February. Yay. So I'm trying to take what we talk about in budget, what's coming up here with the elementary study, what is going to be coming up in the work that I'm a part of with Dr. Taylor for the student services, the middle school staffing, there's a lot of things, some that I'm directly involved in, some that I'm not. And this is not me not trusting people, but just trying to communicate very clearly of what I need from everybody in order to advocate effectively.
So can you send an email a few days before the next BBC or the next FinCom meeting that you're going to requesting?
Bless you.
Sorry, um, requesting any updates or changes or alterations to what has currently been on the objective. Like there's just so many moving parts. The communication piece is hard. There's a lot of us working hard. Um, and I think that will help you maybe feel a little bit more like you can go in and do your job properly while still accounting for the, the flexibility. Um, that's been necessitated by the, the change in staff and the upcoming transition. Does that work?
I could definitely, I can definitely do that, Joan. But also, I mean, I do already send out emails to everybody in this meeting that keeps you posted of the budget work in between our meetings. But I, I can, I can do that and specifically request if that's what people would like me to do.
Right, but if you're specifically pulling together stuff, um, you know, it, you know, poking David and saying, you know, hey, did anything change in the elementary subcommittee? Or Dave, hey, did anything change as we're going in? Could you just let me know? It's, I anticipate this will be on that. I, I think that, that's helpful.
I can do that.
Okay. So that veered from elementary subcommittee to a group dynamics conversation. Does anyone have anything else on either one of those topics? No, okay. All right, let's move into the superintendent evaluation process.
Yeah, so.
I'm sorry, because we decided to skip policy at the beginning of the meeting because our policy folks are out ill.
Yes, um, so I had talked with Anne Marie and she knew she wouldn't be able to come to this meeting and, and said that I would guide this part of the discussion. Um, so in your packet, you have a very short document that I pulled together. The top part of the document is what we had, um, previously agreed and voted on as a school committee in terms of the timeline. And then the second part of the document is just what I think we should finalize and vote on tonight. Um, so previously what we had said is that at the end of January 2024, um, Dr. Thompson would have his self-assessment and all of the links and references to evidence to us. Um, and also the Google forms that we use for individual evaluation should be sent out to all of us by the end of January. Um, we had previously said that in February 2024, um, we would have our individual evaluations done by mid-February and that the goal was to allow for a full two weeks from the time that our individual evals were done and when the composite was due. And we had said that we were targeting the first March meeting in 2024 to have that composite draft document to review and hopefully vote on. But if we needed more time to discuss, edit, vote, we could bring it back at the second March meeting. Um, so taking what we previously voted on and looking at the calendar, um, the first thing I think we need to decide is which two school committee members are responsible, uh, for this process. Um, Joan and David, I know you both have done it a couple of times, sometimes together, sometimes with other people. Um, but whoever is going to, whichever two school committee members are gonna take ownership over this, they will be the two who create those Google forms, send the Google forms out to the five school committee members. And then once each of us are done with the individual, you take that and you create the composite document. Um, and you would be responsible for creating and presenting the composite document. Um, in addition to deciding that, um, I think we should just specify the dates. So we should decide which date in January. And Dr. Thompson, we would need your feedback on what's feasible for you. Um, but which date in January should we expect the self-assessment from Dr. Thompson? And then which date in February are we all gonna have our individual evaluations done? Um, if we are planning to have a composite document on March 6th, the two-week time period before that would be February 20th. But I did wanna call everyone's attention to the fact that that is during break week. Um, and then just a reminder that due to open meeting law and this process, um, we as school committee don't get that finalized composite document until the morning of March 6th, until the morning that we're going to see it in a meeting at night. Um, so Joan, that's, that's, you know, what we voted on before and the things that I think we need to decide on tonight.
I'm looking, sorry, I'm looking at the long-term agenda as well. David, do you have, is anybody volunteering to be the, uh, composite writer? Or one of the composite writers?
Yeah, is that you?
No, I was asking if anyone else was volunteering.
Uh, due to everything I told you I'll be doing for budget in February, I can be one of those.
I can, I can be one of the people who produces the Google docs and does the, the composite form. I've done it before.
Do you wanna just do that, then? We can split it.
Sure, yeah, we can do that.
And then you're gonna do the date for our, that ours are due, is Monday, the 26th?
Yeah, I'm looking, is, is the long-term agenda correct with the 28th being the school committee budget workshop? I know we just talked about this earlier in this meeting, but I am.
It is.
No.
Yes, no, that's, it is. That's another budget workshop that comes later in the process. But yes, we do have the 28th.
Okay, um, well, Dave, sorry, go ahead, David. Dave, what seems feasible for you for a self-assessment? Because.
Are you, I, I guess I'm confused by the self-assessment piece. Are, are you looking for an update on my goals and indicators?
It's the same process we've always done, Dave. So the first thing is you have to write.
Yeah, but, but, but a self-assessment is usually done at the beginning of the process. You're looking for an update on my goals and indicators.
No, we're looking for following the dusty rubric. Your complete self-assessment of how you think you did over the last two years, which yes, would include an update of your goals and indicators, and then all the evidence for us to review so we can write our evaluation.
Yeah, so I mean.
This is the whole, yeah, it's the full two-year, not the mid, not the last year, one year, mid-year.
Yep.
Right, so I would take the mid-year document and add to it and, and go forward from there. So, um, I probably will be referencing things that have been presented at school committee meetings. Um, not necessarily trying to recreate the last two years. Um, just, you know, with all that is going on, I am concerned about having the capacity to do all of that. So, um, that is my plan going forward. Um, obviously we have budget to do in January and, and to compile. So the later that date is, the better. Because when we come back, um, most of my time will be spent going through, uh, budgets with, uh, directors and principals.
So I'll just say that it will be helpful if you are, I have no problem with you referencing school committee, but you, you will need to reference the dates. You can't just say, as referenced in school committee meetings over the past few years. Like we'll, we'll need more specifics or links to the updates. You send, I mean, you send updates every other week. So link to those updates would be helpful, too.
Yep.
Um, okay, so the later the better, which means we're looking at, I'm sorry, I'm trying to do seven things on my computer. Um, so we have a school committee meeting on the 24th. Um, so the latest would be the 31st that you could get it to us in January, which would then put us at mid-February would look like. That's what mid-February looks like, by the way. Um, well, David, how long do you think you would need to do? Where can we trim? Do we trim on the school committee reading the self-assessment and getting us individual evaluations? Or do we trim on us taking the individual evaluations and compiling it into a composite?
What do you mean trim? I think you go, date one is January 31st.
Yep.
I think date two, you either do the Friday going into thing, uh, Friday going into break, which would be the 16th, or do it at the, I don't know, about Monday. So the, um, after break, which would be the 26th. And then the first March meeting between the end of February date and the first March meeting is like two weeks or a week and a half.
Which is March 6th is the first March meeting, right?
Correct.
Right, that, I, that's what I was asking trimming. Like that gives more time to the individual members to write their evaluations and less time for us to compo- to develop the composite.
Correct.
It's turning out composite, yeah.
Yes.
That, that timeline works fine for me.
Okay.
What one are you saying that you want our individual evals?
January 31st for Dave's self-assessment.
Yep.
I just put my calendar away, hold on. Uh, February 19th for the individuals.
I would even say, do you want 19th or 26th? Cause 26th would give people the break.
Either is fine, it doesn't matter, the 26th.
26th.
Just keep in mind that we do have that budget workshop.
The 28th.
On the 28th, yep. Um, and then we would have the composite out to everybody by March 6th.
Okay. Um, can I make a motion just so this is like officially captured in our notes?
Yes.
First, not part of a motion, but thank you, Joan and David, because I think you did a fabulous job on this before. So I'm glad you're doing it again. Um, so I'd like to make a motion that David and Joan are the super evaluation team. Um, Dr. Thompson's self-evaluation will be due on January 31st. The school committee's individual evaluations will be due on February 26th. And then the composite document will be presented on March 6th.
Correct, we will email it to everyone's, um, email address that morning.
So that's my motion.
Second. Second. Any discussion? Okay, I need to pull individually, Teresa?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that passes 3-0.
Thank you.
Good job, everybody. Anything else around that? I think that all we needed to do was work out the process, right?
I believe so, unless Dr. Thompson had any other questions for us.
Not at this time.
Okay. Okay, great, and now I need to close all the other things. Okay, great, Dr. Munoz, the Wellness Curriculum Update, please.
All right, so thank you guys for allowing me to come and share a quick update. We are in the process of, I wouldn't even call it a curriculum refresh for wellness, more like a curriculum adoption, because it hasn't really been a curriculum replacement, it's been more future creative over the past history, if you know what. Mr. Ryan Quigley has been a wonderful guy with his colleagues researching curriculum in the past six months, and under the direction of my predecessor, Dr. Wyatt, has really taken a lead on researching on what the state, sorry, the DCE state knee standards are going to be and how they correlate to our potential new curriculum for K-12. One of the priorities that we're looking at is we want a curriculum that is not just for elementary, but for all K-12. We want something that has an SEL component. And particularly through our secondary school, how can we talk about mental health? And can that be at the forefront? Providing teachers with support to have those conversations with students, helping to alleviate some of the concerns that all students have on a daily basis. We are scheduling to meet with the whole Health and Wellness Department in early January. At that time, Mr. Quigley will share a couple of options in curriculum, but probably one main option that he researched with a couple of colleagues to see what the team is thinking about that, how we want to proceed, if there's something else in the curriculum that we want to look at, to have multiple pilots or a single pilot. And I think that we have an opportunity where initially we thought that it was going to be just an elementary pilot, we might have an opportunity to do a K-12 pilot based on the funding that we got from School Committee and our budget last year. So that is our next steps. I know that there was a quick mention of the Visual Arts. The team has, the team for Visual Arts has been meeting, they've been meeting the all of fall semester, they're meeting in early January as well. There's been a lot of progress made on there, on options for curriculum piloting, and I can provide you with an update of that in late January, early February if you have.
Excellent. Any questions?
Joan, no, I mean, it sounds like a lot of work in figuring out how to move forward, which I understand and appreciate. So I guess my request is, Dr. Munoz, to keep us updated in January. And again, I know this is another area where there was a transition from Dr. Wyatt to you, and with transition, there's change and people work differently and present differently. But I guess I'm just looking for some continuity, what is shared with the School Committee. And there used to be a spreadsheet that Dr. Wyatt shared that showed like which school, which class was piloting, what the costs were, so as you're continuing this work, just keep us updated in that, and then also the budgetary implications.
I appreciate the heads up because we want to provide all that for you. And so after we meet with the teams, I'll provide all the information, which classes are trades, what schools, and what this all looks like, if it's going to be a huge pilot or a small pilot, and we'll have all the information.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Doctor, sorry, Dr. Thompson.
Yes, so the next is the, yes, so the Transportation request, I'm not going to obviously read the full memo, but there is an immediate request to bring on basically the clerk in the Transportation Office. Earlier today, you saw the numbers that are increasing. We now are probably about three times the number of vans and buses we have when I started here seven years ago. Seven, three times more the drivers, et cetera, et cetera. You know, it's just, we, one person answering the phone is just, is just not enough right now. So asking that that be a full-time position. If, if the person does need benefits in respect to the town and our agreement with them, I have conferred with Mr. Wells, and we would be able to cover benefits in the revolving account. This position would be paid out of the Transportation Revolving Account. Once the initial budget is finished, Mr. Wells and I will be looking at, looking at a long-term plan. We have an interim Assistant Transportation Director right now, but we're probably going to need to do some salary adjustments there. We need to figure out how we will pay for that going forward. Once we figure that out, we will share that back with you. But our immediate request right now is to solve the immediate staffing problem in the Transportation Department. Whoop, you're muted there, Joan.
Any questions for Dr. Thompson?
No, just to clarify, Dr. Thompson, so we currently have the .46, and you're asking to go to a 1.0, 18 an hour, and is it an additional cost of 20,160? Or the total cost is the 2160?
I believe it's, is it the additional, I, I don't, I'd have to go back and look. My notes are on my desk, unfortunately. Matt, do you remember if?
That would be the total cost for the remainder of the year.
The total cost?
Yep.
Okay, and then, I know you just said this, Dr. Thompson, but just to clarify and help the community understand that although this is above the five FTEs that we are supposed to add under our override pledge, part of the reason that there's a cap on the FTEs is because the shared cost of benefits come out of the town side. But we are saying that if this person does need benefits, we can cover it in the revolving fund, so it would not hit the town side.
Exactly, and, you know, and even the salary we're looking to cover in the revolving fund.
Okay. Do you want me to make a motion, Joan?
Yeah, sure, you can go ahead and make the motion, I can ask my question after.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the increase for the full-time clerk for the rest of this year, to be a 1 point, 1 point FTE.
Second.
I don't actually have a question, okay. All in favor? Oh, sorry, Teresa, I have to pull individually.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes 3 to 0.
Thank you.
Okay.
And Joan, could I just emphasize what Dr. Thompson was talking about? So we, you know, we have a phenomenal Transportation Director, Al Bishop, who has a lot on his plate and also frequently drives. So a discussion that's been happening for quite a while in the Budget Subcommittee is around that position and overall, the sustainability of the Transportation Department. As Dr. Thompson said, we do have an interim Assistant Director right now, but a lot of networking had to happen to get that person in the role because the job description and the pay salary for the Assistant Director is too low. So Ms. Sheridan had started, and Mr. Wells is going to finish some market analysis, which the Budget Subcommittee will, you know, work with them on in January and then come back to the full committee.
Can I ask a question about market analysis? So we pay the town for HR work. Does, does the HR office, I know that they completed market analysis for town-side employees, would they be able to help us with this, or no?
We haven't asked, we can ask.
I'm, I mean, Mr. Wells, I leave that to your discretion. I just want to make sure, we, we do pay the town to help us with HR functions. So this seems like an HR function to me, but again, I'm sticking my nose in where it doesn't belong, just, so, so we can end the conversation.
I think it's something we can explore, and Dr. Thompson could explore. Just remember, though, on the town side, they have the Personnel Board, and the Personnel Board does a lot of the salary stuff. And it's actually in the financial policies of the town that the Personnel Board does not support the School Committee. So we probably just want to hash out what is HR and what is Personnel, which does not currently support the School Committee.
Like I said, we can ask.
Anyway, all right. Okay, Consent Agenda.
Yes, so we have several donations, but we also had a request for, have a request for a new scholarship. It is a STEM scholarship. The donor is Richard Foster. And he's looking at a two-year scholarship for the class of 2004 and 2025. And it would be 1,000 per year, 500 for Technology Engineering and 500 for Math. And they would like to start, the first year would obviously be this spring. So it's, it's a $2,000 donation, $1,000 per year, two scholarships, 500 for Tech and Engineering, and 500 for Math each year. So we need a motion to approve the scholarship and approve the donation for that.
Wonderful. Is there a motion to approve?
Some of.
Second.
All right, I need, we need to pull any discussion, additional discussion? Teresa?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so thank you very much, Mr. Foster.
Yes, if I, yeah, if I could just make one more, so this is in memory of Karen Foster Curly, class of 77, passed away this May, and John R. Foster, class of 77, who also, who passed away in 2016, so.
Well, thank you.
All right. And then, whoop, wait a minute, we have another scholarship request. The name of the scholarship is the Andrea Dixon Laveri Memorial Scholarship. And the donors are Christopher and Sheila Dixon. It's a perpetual scholarship, annual renewal. Family responds to the scholarship each year and send a check to the high school for scholarship award winner. The amount of the scholarship is $2,000, and they are looking to have that approved as well.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I would just say that I knew Andrea and I know the Dixon family, and obviously it was a terrible loss, and she is missed. And I think this is a wonderful, wonderful way to honor her.
Thank you. All right, and then we have a donation to the lead.
We didn't actually vote, because we have to pull individually. Teresa?
Okay.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes 3 to 0. Okay, David?
Okay, all right, and then we have a donation from the WCC Thrift Shop, and it is a gift card for the lead program of $500.
Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have to pull individually, Teresa?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes 3 to 0.
And the lead program is breaking it in because they have another gift card for $25 from Simply Sweets on Washington Street.
Motion to accept.
Second it.
That is the new, right, that is the Boba Tea Place, the new Boba Tea Place, Simply Sweets?
I don't know what that means.
I, I think so, yeah.
David helps go downtown, they have wonderful sweets in, in that, in that business. So we'll say thank you very much to them. Teresa?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that is 3 to 0. That is all.
Okay, that's all the donations, yep.
For Consent Agenda, great. So it is now time for School Committee Addenda. We'll start with Teresa, Teresa, do you have an addenda this evening, addendum this evening?
No, just want to wish everybody a happy holiday break, and I hope that the time off is resorative and brings you joy.
David?
Just want to echo the same thing. The district I work in, we're counting wake-ups, so two more wake-ups and then we're on break. So enjoy vacation, enjoy the holiday, and enjoy the time off.
I will just say, I, you know, memorial scholarships are always such a hard thing. I'm always grateful for the outpouring of support from the community to the schools, but it's always obviously a sad event to be accepting memorial scholarships. But I do want to say thank you to those families and to the businesses that continue to donate and support all of the different pieces of our schools. I hope everybody has, excuse me, an excellent and well-restful break, and everybody comes back feeling well-rested. We do need to go into executive session. We will only come back for the purposes of adjournment. And so I do need to pull individually, however, oh, I need a motion to go into executive session.
They'll move.
Second.
Okay, and I do need to pull individually. Teresa?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so we will adjourn into, we will go into executive session for the purposes of contract negotiations, and then we will only return to the public session to adjourn. So have a good night, have a wonderful break, everybody. And to the committee, I will see you on the executive session later. Bye, everybody.
Bye.